Good evening and welcome everybody to this meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee, which is being held in the Council Chamber at the Town Hall. In case you think I'm squinting, I've been given my instructions in very small print, and as an old lady I'm having difficulty reading it. Some of our housekeeping notes. Please note that social distancing restrictions and other public health safety measures may still apply, so let's just keep our distance from others. Stay seated as often as possible during a meeting. If you need to leave your seat, think about wearing a mask. And as usual, there is hand sanitiser available, which is in the corner by the door over there. This meeting is a public meeting and is being livestreamed for the public to see. Can I ask that when you do want to speak, that you raise your hand? And then when I indicate for you, please make sure that your microphone is switched on, and that when you've finished speaking, that you do switch off your microphone as well. Housekeeping matters as well. We all know where the toilets are. Outside, to the right for gents, and to the left for ladies. We're not aware of any planned fire alarms, so if the fire alarm does go, please leave the chamber and make your way back out of the building towards the nearest fire exit, which can be found off the stairwell to the right of the chamber, and then we do gather in Tudor Square. We're also this evening trialling our new hybrid system, so we have got some remote participants on screen. If a remote participant wishes to speak, can they indicate by using the raised hand function, which is like a yellow hand, which appears... Oh, there's one demonstrating for me. But if you can't find that button, which I know sometimes it's all a bit strange, then wave your hand, and I'm sure I'll notice that as well. And Jay, who is young and has eagle eyes, will make sure you're picked up. Thank you. So I'm just going to say also that I'm mindful that here we are, meeting as an audit committee, while it looks like the beginnings of a war is taking place in Eastern Europe, where Russia has invaded Ukraine. And I just think we would all want to say that our thoughts are with the people of Ukraine at this time. Thank you, committee. So with that, I'm just going to do quick introductions in the Council Chamber. I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards, and I'm the chair for today's meeting. If I go round Marouf?
Councillor Mohammed Marouf, representing Crookston Crosspool.
Councillor Simon Clement Jones, representing Bishopman Greenhill, also deputy chair of this committee.
That's the right button. And I'm still David Parker, councillor for Richmond Ward.
Ben Curran, councillor for Walkley Ward.
Angela Argentio, councillor for Bromley, Helen Shorville.
Alison Howard, independent co-opted member.
And then our staff team who hold us together.
Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal Involvements.
Sarah Hyde, Democratic Services Team Manager.
Eugene Walker, currently acting Chief Executive.
Right, we'll all be on our best behaviour then, Eugene. Sorry, and I've forgotten to... In front of me? And there he is, the three people there that help us with all the technical stuff. Right, let's make a start. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Chair, we've got one apology from councillor Joe Depaszek.
Exclusion of the press and public, I'm not aware of any items for which we would exclude anybody. Item four, declarations of interest. Right, so we go on to item five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. I'll go through them first for accuracy, and then for any issues arising. So, where are we? Page nine? Page 10? Page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Page 15? And page 16? So can I have agreement that these are a true record? Thank you councillor Barker, and seconded by councillor Clement Jones. Oh, thank you. And then any matters arising, I'll just ask, does anybody have any, rather than going through all the pages again? Right, and Eugene, did you want to say something about the signing of the accounts, the annual accounts?
Thanks, Chair. So you recall we're finalising the accounts for the auditors. The Chair and I are both required to actually sign the accounts. We did that yesterday. Just been contacted by the auditors, there were some things that they didn't quite get right in the letter, so they've just sent us another letter, so we'll be signing that and then it's all done. So just to record for the minutes, we've got that revised letter, and we'll sort that out. And then that's it. Thank you.
Until next year, Eugene. Okay, so thank you for that. So moving on, we have... We have me trying to find the agenda page. We have item six, review of the procedure for dealing with standards complaints and the Members' Code of Conduct. So I'm going to pass over to Gillian Duckworth.
Thank you, Chair. This is your annual report, that where we have a look at and review the procedures that we use when we're dealing with complaints against elected members, and the code of conduct that members adhere to. They were last reviewed and signed off by full council in January 21. The code of conduct, we did a workshop, we did an ethical standards workshop that looked at the procedure and the code, and took into account the model code that was produced by the LGA last year as well, in making the updates to our current code of conduct and our procedures. So this report is suggesting that the code of conduct needs no further amendment. However, we also ran a complex complaints workshop in November 21 with members, where we identified, or members identified, some changes that they would like to see in the procedure. This report hopefully picks up the amendments that members asked for. I'd just like to point out that I have missed 6.8.7, the addition that I've added into the procedure, sorry, the clauses from the procedure, 6.8.7. And it's about clarity about completing an investigation within 12 weeks. Happy to take questions, Chair.
Does anybody have any questions they want to ask about? Thank you councillor Curran.
Yes, thank you. It's just, when we have sort of timeframes, we use different languages, a different language at different points. And I can probably understand why, but I think I just want to flag it. So when we're talking... So at 6.3, we say the complainant and the member will be informed in writing within 10 working days. At 6.5, we say the monitoring officer will seek to deal with within eight weeks. So in one, we're saying it will be dealt within a timeframe. In another, we're saying we seek to do it in a timeframe, which is two quite different things. And if I just sort of track back to my previous life in a legal setting, quite often in law there is a timeframe, and then you go somewhere else, you go back for permission to extend it if you need to. And that way, there's more clarity and more check and balance. So for me, I think we should be saying that it will be dealt within a matter of eight weeks, but then have a process. So if the investigating officer can't deal with it in eight weeks, we'd go to the monitoring officer and say, I need an extension for this reason, which could be any number of things, completely legitimate. But it puts another check in the process, and it also provides clarity to everyone else when we say, well, what's the reason? You can say, well, here's a bit of paper they've signed to say the reason why it was delayed. And so that way, I think it just builds more transparency into what often feels like a very untransparent sort of process. And that's also repeated at 6.8.7, where we talk about a target completion date of no more than 12 weeks. So it's probably an extra sentence that needs to be put in. It's a slight tweak to words for me, assuming people agree, and then an extra sentence to say where the approval would come from to extend it.
Thank you, yeah. The 6.3, informed in writing within 10 days, that is a simple administrative process, so that's why it's fixed timescale on it. The other two, as you say, you know, there may be third parties are involved, and therefore I might not be able to determine that timescale absolutely. The 12 weeks on 6.8.7 was fixed, and the amendment is to take it away from it being fixed because of the expectation it set with regard to the last complex complaint that we had. And it was very difficult to explain to the complainant that that fixed 12-week timescale actually could be extended. So the idea of changing it here is to try and add more clarity rather than take it away in that, you know, it's... I do not know when I put something out into external investigation, how long that investigation is going to take, and the factors around that. It's not just about the investigator's availability and speed, it's the people they're talking to, and whether it uncovers something else that means they have to make it, take it further. So that's the reason why it's been done like that, but over to the committee to consider what you want to do about it.
Yeah, just on that point, I mean, the fact that it says 12 weeks, whether it's a definite 12 weeks or a target of 12 weeks, sets an expectation that it's going to be dealt with in 12 weeks unless you can explain to the complainant why. So I don't think the wording that's there achieves that. I mean, like I say, for me, I think it's more of a transparency that says, we'll do it in 12 weeks. If we can't, someone will need to ask for that to be extended, or explain why they need it to be extended. So there is that clarity. And I'm just thinking of a simple process where, you know, if it's the investigating officer, they have to ask you, I can't get this done, I need to extend it, and they need to put out why, and you can literally give that to the complainant, say it's going to be extended for another four weeks for this reason. We expect it to be done in a further four weeks. Because as it is now, it might be 12 weeks, it might be two years, there's nothing that in the process sort of sets really an expectation about timeframe, other than it's a rough target. So for me, the process should be 12 weeks, and if it needs to be longer, they explain that, they explain why, and they can explain, I think it'll be another four weeks or eight weeks, and then that expectation of timeframe is still maintained.
So would we have some sort of addition, which just said should an extension be required, the investigating person needs to give the reason in writing to the monitoring officer, for the monitoring officer to agree or otherwise? Because they might say, I want it because I fancy going to Disney World for three days, or it might be because my child is gravely ill, or, you know, it has to be something meaningful, doesn't it? Would that fit, Gillian?
So just to add to that, and I would say, and an approximate timeframe for when they expect it to be done. So if they think four weeks, then they should say, will be done in four weeks. And if not, then go through the process again.
Yes, I think I need to just have a think about when the 12 weeks starts, because is that 12 weeks from the date that it's referred for investigation? Or is that 12 weeks from the date when the investigator's got all the information? And I know it sounds like there shouldn't be much delay, but sometimes there is, so it then becomes unfair to the investigator if they don't have the full period. So I'll just have to think about that while we're continuing, and I'll just onward in. Thank you.
I think I would suggest from when they are asked to start the piece of work, rather than when they've managed to talk to everybody. Is anybody else... Angela?
I have just a question about 3.3, which is the bit in red. I thought that in that workshop that we did about the complex cases, we said that we would inform a member who's subject of a standard complaint, that they can have advice for an independent person. So rather than is entitled, that we would make it more transparent. We had quite a lengthy kind of discussion about this, and we said that members don't necessarily know that they're entitled to that. And from that wording, it sounds like it's the honour is on the person who's being complained against, you know, whom there's a complaint, that needs to do the work, whilst if we say there is kind of advice available to you from the independent person, this is how you go and get that. So it's to make it more explicit that there is support for the member, should they require it, and then if they want to proceed, this is how you do it. I think the wording is a bit ambiguous there.
Yeah, I get your point on that, councillor Argentio. If I... I'll suggest some alternative wording to try and make that clearer. I was just wondering, Chair, if it's acceptable, whether I take the points and then do a redraft and circulate it to members? Is that acceptable?
I've just broken the rule, haven't I, about not using the microphone? Yes, that was agreed by all members of the committee. Are there any other issues that people want to raise on this item? I know that I've scribbled a few down, and I'm just trying to work out whether they have actually been asked by somebody else. Oh, yes, my one question was, because there's a piece on page 45, it talks about registering interests. And I had actually asked the monitoring officer, what happens if somebody refuses to fill in the forms, either because they say it's nobody's business, or their investments that they may have, or any societies that they may belong to or such? And what happens to an elected member who does refuse to give that information? So I just asked Gillian for a bit more clarity on that.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's a criminal offence, so I'd be under a duty, if I became aware of it, to report it to the police, who would then need to investigate to see whether it was something they were going to take forward as prosecution.
Okay, I just wanted people to realise how serious a role it is being a councillor, and all the honourous stuff that we do have to do, which I think is incredibly important and necessary. But I think sometimes people don't know all the different things that councillors have to do, and I think it's very different from being an MP, where it seems to be worn a lot more lightly. I think that's all the... Oh, right, where's the hand up? Sorry, Jay. Okay, David, I hear you want to come in.
If that's acceptable, yes, please. It really... I just wanted to comment, not against what Angela was saying, because clearly it's in the legislation, it's in all the good advice, and there's no question that the subject member should have access to the independent person. I just got slightly edgy when she used the word support for the subject member, because I don't think it's clear, and I wish it was clear, what the role, what the purpose, sorry, not role, what the purpose of that access to the independent person actually is. And personally, I don't think it should be support. I think it should be to gain greater clarity. And even that, I'm slightly uncertain, because the subject member does get the opportunity to respond fully to the monitoring officer, and should respond fully to the monitoring officer. But the main reason that I guess I feel edgy with the word support is that seems uneven-handed when it comes to the complainant, who doesn't get the same level of support. And none of the national experts seem to be very concerned about that. I just feel it ought to be fair and even-handed, and that's why I'd rather just have it in my head, that it's access to help clarify rather than support the subject member. And I'm sorry, Angela, if you don't agree with me, but that's my opinion.
Thank you, David. Angela?
Thank you, David. I understand why you're saying that, because obviously being an independent person, I agree with you, maybe support is the wrong word to use there. But we had a really lengthy discussion about the fact that when there is a complex case, and it takes a long time, the member may feel that they cannot speak to people in their own group because of, you know, it might be... You know, they might either be isolated from the group, or they might have to keep things private. And so having access to someone else to discuss the case with, just discussing it with an independent person would be beneficial to them, as in having at least an outlet to talk about it, whatever, you know, the other person says to them. But I understand that the independent person is independent, so they wouldn't support them or the complainant, they would have to still be independent.
I think the clarification might be that we have independent people who help and advise on this. But on this issue, 3.3, it's for a person to get an independent person who is not one of the committee's independent people. Because if... But it says here, if you're subject to a standards complaint, you can get advice, which I believe might be your own solicitor or somebody else. I'm going to be completely told off now by the monitoring officer.
I'm sorry, Chair, I think I misled you there. No, this is referring to the independent persons, which is David and Jo, and the legislation requires them to be available to the subject member, to give them advice on process, really. That's what it's about. As David said, it's not specific, but I think that's the intention of the legislation. What I was, I thought I was suggesting to the Chair, is the other thing that we have made sure is available to members is some sort of support more generally. So the counselling support that's available to officers through the council is now also available to members. So if it's more emotional support, that type of support that you need, I don't believe that that's the independent person that the member should be turning to. And we're trying to make sure that there is someone there who can offer some independent in that respect, support for members through a counselling service.
Right, I believe, David, you want to come back?
I need to say that Angela's second input I was perfectly comfortable with, and understand that fully, that when things get protracted, well, both sides need to be kept informed, the subject member and the complainant.
Angela, did you want...
So Gillian, are we saying that a member who's subject of a complaint about something that is confidential, then can go and talk to someone outside of the process about what's happening? Because I thought that wasn't allowed.
So professional counselling is what we're talking about here? I'm not talking about talking to one of your colleagues.
What, if they are a professional counsellor?
Marouf's got his hand up. I'm just going to ask for clarification of what I thought I was thinking, my understanding was, that if you're an elected member who's got a complaint against you, then you can get representation and advice, and that would be from...
Source.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, an independent source, such as your trade union rep, if you had one, or a legal person, that, you know, those are things that are open to you. Right, Marouf?
Yeah, I think if I remember the debate clearly, and I'm not touching on what councillor Argentio said, but I think we were talking more about, what I was talking about in that particular format was about emotional support. Because any member who goes through this obviously goes through quite a huge amount of emotional and mental trauma, which is available to officers, but it's not available to members. And sometimes you're already in the press before you've even had any chance to actually say anything, and that can be quite daunting. And that was, I think, what we were trying to achieve, if I remember correctly, yeah.
I think Gillian has just clarified that a counselling service, which is currently available to officers, has now been extended to members. So members who are going through the complaints procedure as somebody being complained against can get support from the counselling service.
Oh, Ben?
Sorry, I think the more we talk about it, the more confused I'm getting. Because the way I've read it, with independent person being capitalised, I assumed that that was a role, and that that would be provided by the council. So the council would say, Ben, here's a list of independent people, pick one, speak to them on us, not fork out of your own pocket and get a lawyer, which I think needs very different wording. Because those are two very different things. One's provided by the process, and one's you can go and get whoever you want to look after you, whether it's your trade union rep or a solicitor or whatever. To me, they're two very different things. And I think that needs to be clearer in the wording.
Independent person is capitalised intentionally, because it's defined by the legislation, and we appoint independent persons, and they are Jo and David, who are our independent persons, who are appointed for a period of four years to support the monitoring officer in dealing with standards complaints. As part of that process, which is set out in legislation, that independent person has to be made available to subject members, if a subject member wants to speak to them. And that, as David said, it doesn't really give you anything more than that, than that line in the legislation. But my interpretation of what that is, is that that independent person is there to make sure that we have a fair to make sure that we have a fair process. So it's a pair of eyes looking at it, not just leaving the monitoring officer to deal with it. And if the subject member wants some advice on the process, then that's what they're there for. I think the Chair was just trying to point out that there's no reason why anyone can't go and get some independent support themselves. Just on the point, if I may, Chair, just to come back on councillor Angenzio's point. I think actually if you are a subject member and you want to talk to one of your colleagues about what the issues are and you want to take them into your confidence, I have absolutely no problem with that. I think it's as a member of this committee or as a subcommittee that it's not appropriate for you to be sharing that information with your colleagues. I think that's the distinction, really.
So can I just suggest then that we say entitled for advice on the process from an independent person and then include another sentence that could say, and seek additional support from whoever privately solicited, trade union, whatever, if you want to put examples, but just to separate them out. Because if one's about process from the independent person and actually you want to talk to someone about substance, then I think that should just be separated out. So it's clear what you get from the independent person will only take you so far down the level of support that you may or may not want.
Right, Gillian's making notes there. And she will circulate some proposed changes or clarifications which we will receive as members. Ben?
Sorry, I'm saying a lot. Apologise. Can I just make a comment on the code of conduct? Because I don't think there's necessarily a way to resolve this today. But I'm aware of situations where complaints have been made in the past.
Which page?
Oh, sorry. It was a general comment, but it relates to the application, which is, as I flick through more paperwork... I was just looking at it. It's on page 36, application of the code of conduct. And obviously it references in the course of your duties as a councillor, which I think's right. However, I'm aware of situations where complaints have been made about comments councillors have made on social media that, in my view, could, well, have crossed lines of what I would say would be acceptable. And I'm obviously not going to give examples, but there's been different people involved, so move on. But they've been found not to be breach of the code of conduct because it's just their name on their Twitter handle or Facebook page or whatever, rather than saying, hey, I'm the councillor at Sheffield. And, I mean, in some cases I found it just amazing. But there's this technicality in the way that we've worded the application that allows that to happen. So if someone takes massive offence to a comment that I think's way over the line, and obviously different people take a different judgement on any piece of content. But then they get a response saying because of a technicality, that's okay. Or not that's okay, but that's not wrong, according to the rulework. And I'm sure you've probably thought about that. And I don't know how we do that because we also don't want the code of conduct to apply to literally everything a councillor ever does anywhere. But I think there's a tension there that we need to think about how we resolve. And it's probably not for today, might be in the next iteration. But I think we need some thought into how we deal with that. Because more and more of our lives and interactions are happening on social media. And people see it, people engage with it, people know we're all councillors, whether you're listed on social media as councillor or whatever or not. So yeah, just the point I think needed to be made, really.
And we have had that discussion. And I think unfortunately it was probably at the workshop that you didn't manage to come to. And it's not something we do, it's the law, unfortunately. So at the moment, the legislation requires a councillor to be acting in the course of the duties as a councillor, in the capacity as a councillor. And it's pretty strict. There's case law on it, the Ken Livingstone case that dates back quite a while now. But the law hasn't changed. And what it says is that a councillor has the right to have a private life. And if they are doing something in the course of the private life, then the code of conduct doesn't apply. And it is quite strict. And I think it was probably before social media became such a big issue for everyone, an everyday issue, should I say. When the Committee for Standards in Public Life did their report in January 2019, they suggested a change to the legislation with, I think with Brexit and then the pandemic. The government haven't got around to doing that, to making that change. So what this, this is, our code of conduct now is based on the model code that was issued by the LGA. And what they've tried to do is put in, take it as far as you can so that you're not, you know, so that you're still in line with the legislation, but sort of saying, we're not very happy about this. And unfortunately, until the legislation changes, we can't be any stronger with it. As soon as the legislation changes, I'll get a workshop together again and we can have a look at that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, personally, I'd say what's your private life is quite different to what you choose to publish to the world. I would say that's your making it public, but that's just me.
Right, thank you, Ben. I think it's, it depends, doesn't it, on whether on social media all you do is publish pictures of kittens or whether you put in, you know, hard-hitting denunciations of a government or person. So I think it is a difficult one. We'll wait for the current government to make those useful changes. No, I'm not holding my breath either. Okay, if we look at the recommendations that we had, we've been asked to comment, which we have. And that we would include any additional revisions arising from this meeting. So basically, we've done everything we've been asked to do. And the last one is that we refer this revised procedure to the parish and town councils for consideration and adoption. We've also asked Gillian to go and think about the queries and suggestions that we had and to bring some wording back, but not to this meeting, that she would circulate it to us. And I think maybe if we include those addendums in the minutes such that we don't have to have another item on it, if members are happy certainly with what we get back. Is that agreed by everybody? Thank you. In which case we'll move on to item seven, which is the Audit and Standards Committee annual report. Now, it says it's Gillian's report, but it also says that Sarah has written the report. So I don't know who wants to speak on it. Gillian?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so you've given the secret away there. Sarah does the work on pulling it together for me. Yes, under my direction, of course, Chair, yes. Yeah, so this is the standards report for this year. It will, it sets out the work of the committee, of this committee, for the year that relates specifically to standards. It says, it talks about how I deal with standards, how I support the committee and how I deal with standards complaints. On page 64, you've got a table of the number of complaints and the breakdown by the findings. There's a little bit there at number six about independent persons. It just explains how they are appointed and who they are, which is David Whitezman, Joe Cairns, and they may want to come in, Chair, after I've finished to speak on this matter. Just to say that the four-year term, it says at 6.4, the four-year term is due to end, I think, in September. So we're about to go out to have the four independent persons. The, I provide support to the parish and town councils, they operate under the same code as us. It's been less of that this year, to be honest. A lot of the issues I've dealt with have been more the city council than in previous years, the parishes have dominated my work. The training and development part, I've tried to set out here the things that the committee have done and also the training that's been offered to members generally. As you remember, we had an offer of free training package from local government association that we started using about, probably about 10 months ago, about June of last year, I think it was. The offer there was made to members to ask them to let us know what it was, what type of... So the idea was general training, general approach by the local government association and a request to members to let us know what types of training you thought you needed. What we have done over the last year as well with the introduction of the local area committees and the transitional committees is we've also put in some additional support within democratic services to deal specifically with member development. And the proposal going forward when we move to a committee system from May 22 is that we keep that post or we keep that resource within democratic services as we think that this is an important officer role that's needed to make sure members get what they need in the form of training and development. We do now have a training and development plan that is on the shared area that the members can access as well, just to...
I think we also agreed that governance committee would be accountable body for member development.
Thank you, Chair, yes. Earlier this week, myself and the Chair were both involved in a governance committee meeting. And the governance committee did agree that they will stand as a committee next year and will, one of their responsibilities will be member development. The development and training relating to the code of conduct will continue to be owned by this committee. But generally, member development will be owned by the governance committee. And we've talked about mandatory training. I've had lots and lots of conversations about mandatory training for members. One of the things that I have emphasized is that in order to do that, I don't have any sanction for a member who doesn't undertake training. What I need is support from the groups. The political groups need to support me in getting their members to do training and development. And that's something that I'm hoping, as we move forward into the committee system and we've got a much more structured offer for training and development, we can, you know, make sure we've got something that's user-friendly, accessible for members. And therefore it's easier for you to do that training and development and we can encourage you to do it. And hopefully we'll all feel like it's of benefit to us. I think that's about it, Chair. The committee's taken, had reports on ombudsmen and whistleblowing and will continue to review that and look at that in the year ahead. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gillian. Angela has a question.
Just a very quick question, Gillian. Thank you very much for the report. When we had this report last time, I seem to remember, well, there are a lot, lot less cases this time round. I wonder whether it's because it was, we were still in partly in lockdown and people were more well behaved. But I seem to remember, and I just haven't had time to go and look at the minute, that we asked for it. That one that I remember was itemised, which one referred to the parish council. It's so divided between the parish council and the, and Sheffield City Council. But I thought that we'd agree that we would split it by percentage at least for the political parties. Is there something we discussed at the time?
My recollection is we discussed it, but the committee didn't agree it.
I certainly know that we did discuss it. I think we were concerned, weren't we, that with the size of groups, it might mean that, I don't know, it would look disproportionate if you had, I don't know, six Labour members. But that would actually only be, you know, 2% or something compared with one member of the Green Party, which would, you know, possibly be 20% if you make, if you see what I mean. I'm agnostic on this, to be honest. But I'm interested in what other members of the committee think. You look as if you've woken up, Simon.
Yeah, no, for me, I mean, this is about, I presume only the cases where there's been breach of the code found. Because obviously if there's been no breach, then why would we be publicising any of those details? It's only the ones that are having breaches where it would have to be relevant, I would say. But I mean, for me, the process is already too opaque and to some degree unsatisfactory. But that's the process. So here we are. Thank you.
Thank you. That was worth hearing, Simon. Does anybody else want to say anything on this? And do any of our independent members want to say anything? I can't see any yellow hands, but is anybody waving, Jay? John, did you put your hand up? No. Okay. Can we actually go away and have a bit of a discussion about that? About the proposal that Simon said about it's only if there is any action as opposed to if there is something where no, no action is required? Because what we wouldn't want to do is, oh, I don't know, if you'd had somebody having some vexatious complaints against them, say six or seven, which proved all to be unproven and vexatious, such that it might look like one party had had loads of complaints against them, but none of them were founded. So can we just have a wee bit more of a think about that, Angela?
I suppose if the numbers are this, I think when we discussed it, there were like 31 complaints. Some of the complaints, I remember Gillian saying they were against the same councillor. As in, it wasn't all separate cases. So I assume that these might be the same, might not. But if the numbers are this low and they keep this low, I mean, it's fantastic if that happens. It could be kind of a breach of the confidentiality of the person, and that's the problem. But if the numbers were higher and you are able to... It's not because we want it to be opaque, but because we want the kind of privacy, if you want, of the person to be protected. Yeah, it's tricky. With low numbers, it's really tricky because then people are recognizable from the process. But then the process is not transparent enough for people outside the council to have faith in it being fair. And I think that is what we need to aim for. We have to aim for a transparent system. But it's difficult to decide what's the best way forward. So yeah, maybe more discussion. But I agree with Simon that it is a very kind of opaque system as it is because it's confidential.
Gillian, is this a laid-down way of doing it or is it our way of doing it? And do other councils do it differently, such that there might be some other way that we think is, has less opacity?
It's not determined, but the main reason why it's done in this way is because data protection. So it's to protect the individual's data and information source. We did have the workshop to have a look at this and no changes were agreed by you. But if you want to have another, if you want to have another... But if you want to have another, if you want to do it again and we want to have a look at it again, I'm more than willing to do that. We can schedule one in again for, say, September again, which will be a year after the last one. And we can have a look at it again and bring you data, you know, as much data as we can find on how other councils deal with it. But no, it's not prescribed. The legislation around this is minimal. So we agree that we will have a look at it again in September. And by then, obviously, the government will have also published their proposals for the changes, won't they? And so we'll have a really good workshop on it. So if I just look, we're just asked to comment and approve this report for submission to full council. So is that agreed by everybody? Lots of nodding. Thank you very much. And we move on to our final item, which is our work programme for the rest of the year, really. Something, I was talking this morning to Dave Phillips and we both remarked that the March agenda looks extremely large. And although we know sometimes things fall off, these didn't look like the sorts of things that might fall off. So I was going to suggest that we might start that meeting at 4pm. Not so that we make it much longer, but just so that if we can have it at four, it gives us more chance if we get bogged down in any of these agendas that we're not here until, I don't know, eight o'clock. Would that be agreeable to people? Right, I'm getting nods from that. Any comments on the work programme? Sorry, yes, Gillian. Can we add in then in September that we will have a workshop for members on all of the standards issues? And procedures? Okay. Are there any, are there any comments from any of our independent members? No? Okay. Have you felt like you've been part of the meeting even though you've sort of been zooming in from home? Has it, has it felt useful? Right, I'm getting noddings.
I feel somewhat detached from it, in truth. It's clearly efficient and saves time and expense and all those things. But for me, it's not, it's not the same. But perhaps I'm just old fashioned as well as old.
Don't think you can take that honour of age off me, David. I think, I think it does feel like that when we are doing Zoom. On the other hand, you now haven't got to go out into the snow, have you, to get home? So there are pluses and minuses about it, I guess. Is that a hand up or is that just a thumb up?
Yes, I would reiterate what David said. It can seem very convenient for us, like if people sat in our lounges or whatever and you're all there having to traipse in. But I think I've really felt, and I'm very used to virtual remote meetings and other forums, that this feels as if we don't have that interaction with the members that we would have if we were physically present.
Okay, well, I think what we will do is obviously if you want to come to meetings, physically come to meetings, you will always be welcome. But we will continue to have hybrid Zoom meetings for anybody who wants to do that. Sorry, I've got another hand up there. Sorry, you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. Yes, I mean, it's certainly suitable to myself because these meetings fall on the Thursdays when we have meetings at parish and such forth. And so it means that now I can go to the next meeting, which starts in 10 minutes, 15 minutes. So from that point of view, I found it very good.
Thank you. Right, you better run, hadn't you? So thank you, everybody else, and we'll see you all at the March meeting.